All right. Good evening, everybody. For the record, it is Thursday, December 9th, 2021. Time for the regular meeting of Wenatchee City Council. Interesting meeting today as we welcome some new council members and say goodbye to some council members. Anyhow, super excited for the evening. We always start with a pledge to our flag, and since you guys are both leaving us, can you do it together? Can Jim and Ruth lead us together?
Sure. Give it a try.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And for roll call this evening, we have all of our council members, minus Jose, who's on vacation this week. So we will start with our swearing-in ceremony. So we are honored to have Shalane County Superior Court Judge Robert Jordan here with us today. So Judge, if you'd come up, and council member-elect Poyer, and council member-elect Roganostian, and council member Huffaker, if you guys would come up, and we'll go ahead and get this started. We have a microphone, so our friends at home can listen. Do you want, Jesse, you want the judge to have that, or is he gonna get it picked up? You have your microphones, aren't you?
There you go.
Sure. So if first, I could have Mike, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Mike Poyer, do solemnly swear, or affirm, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of Washington, and will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the office of the city of Wenatchee, District Two, council member, to the best of my ability. Congratulations. (applause) The certificate as well. Top. You can raise your right hand. of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of Washington, and will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of my office of the city of Wenatchee, District Three, to the best of my ability. Congratulations.[357.72][357.72](applause) Okay. Keith, can you please raise your right hand. I, Keith Huffaker, do solemnly swear, or affirm, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of Washington, and will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the office of the city of Wenatchee, council member, district at large, be to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Thank you.[441.12][441.12](applause)
Top, Mike, and Keith, just go over here and say something intelligent to the audience, right?[481.12][481.12](laughter)
Be brief.
Thanks, Mayor. First thing I want to thank is Councilmember Bailey. Before I ran, we talked ahead of time, and he's given me a lot of wisdom and advice when I was on the city council before, and I just want to tell him thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity.
Thank you, Mayor.
I also like to recognize Councilmember Sparza for all her support and just the recognition and help counsel me and do the right thing. I think you've been impressive to me as a guidance. I brought today, or my wife was willing to come. Would you stand up? My wife, Maureen, 36 years marriage.[523.01][523.01](applause) She's holding my granddaughter Florence and my youngest daughter Libby. She volunteers at the YWCA and Pinnacle's, the new Pinnacle School. And I think my other daughter went outside, but she teaches at Pinnacle, and my wife has instilled, there's my daughter Abby, and my grandson Simon. And my wife and I, we try to instill community and giving back, and I'm very proud of my children to do that. And I admire you guys for doing the right thing in your lives.[567.89][567.89](applause)
Yeah, I also want to thank all the council people before me who hope to continue that legacy of leadership that they've done, and this is a really proud day for me. I know my parents could be here, I know it'd mean a lot to them. My wife Jenny, she's, I mean, she's my number one support, and she does so much for the community through her work with nonprofits, so I hope I can also learn from her and learn from everyone and do you all proud. Thank you.[610.16][610.16](applause)
Well, thank you all for being here. I just want to say that it's an honor to represent the city of Wenatchee for another four years. This last nine years has been a real learning experience for me. I appreciate all the other council members. We work great as a team, we learn from each other, and it's been a real wonderful experience, and I'm looking forward to another four years. So thank you again.[638.00][638.00](applause)
All right, well, let's get to work then. All right, so our first item on today's agenda is our consent items, which includes approving of tonight's agenda, the vouchers and the minutes from the previous meetings, and to accept the work performed by contractor J&amp;K Earthworks on City Project 1805. I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we approve the consent items consisting of this evening's agenda, vouchers, and minutes from previous meetings, and also a motion for the council to accept the work performed by the contractor J&amp;K Earthworks LLC on City Project Number 1805, and further authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by, I think it was, Councilmember Bailey, to approve the agenda, vouchers, and minutes from our previous meetings, and to accept the work performed by the contractor J&amp;K Earthworks LLC on Project Number 1805, further authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This is a time for citizen comment, and a member of the audience wish to address the city council on something that's on tonight's agenda, except for the public hearing items regarding our capital facility plan and our comp plan amendments. We will take public comment then. Anybody wish to address the council? Mayor Crawford.
Hello? Can I do this?
Yeah, come on up, sit down.
Oh, I even get to sit.
Name an address for the record.
Good evening. I make everybody stand over in East Wenatchee. My name is Jerley Crawford, mayor of East Wenatchee, live at 1109 10th Street, East Wenatchee, of course. I'm just here really quick to, first of all, thank the outgoing council members. Your service to Wenatchee, but it is also a service to the region, which is what I'm passionate about. We sit on some committees together, so Ruth, I'll miss getting to see you. And Jim, of course, I see you at all the events that take place in the community. I'm sure you'll still be there, though, just wearing a different hat. And then also, just to take the opportunity to welcome the new council members. We are the other side of the river, the other city, but it is important to me that we work together and have a good partnership and good relationships, and so I look forward to working with the two of you as well. All right. That was it.
All right. Thanks, Mayor. Thanks for being here. Anybody else wish to address the council? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Kim Martin, and my property address is 203 Snohomish Street, and that's here in Wenatchee. And I wanted to address the city council about a homeless camp that's in a residential neighborhood. The homeless camp at the Salvation Army seems to be creeping into residential neighborhood. We are across the street from the DOT park property. There was one motorhome, and now there are two. There are piles of garbage, shopping carts, empty propane tanks, human waste, hypodermic needles, et cetera. We have seen drug deals and prostitution. Small children who live in our duplex have to walk past to get on the school bus, and our neighbors feel unsafe. Wenatchee police have been great. They've been very nice, but they say their hands are tied. They told me that it was DOT property that they're on, but it is, in fact, city of Wenatchee property, which I did verify with the county, Shalane County. I volunteered extensively at homeless shelters and can tell you that the new homeless shelter will be amazing and help a lot. However, I can tell you that people who are active in drug addiction don't want to follow the rules of a shelter, the rules like they can't come in and out, and so they tend to not use them. So I was just hoping to, and I do have a photo to share with each of you, but I was just hoping to get some help with this issue. It is in a residential neighborhood. Imagine if it was across the street from your home, and it's getting very scary.
Yeah, thank you for coming, and obviously, we're aware of it. We all know that the issue there by the George Keller Bridge near the Salvation Army where the campsites are hanging out. We have looked at that extensively. It's our opinion that it's on WashDOT's property. We asked WashDOT, State Department of Transportation, to give us permission to trespass them off of the property, and they have denied that. And so they said that the folks in Olympia have told them that they will not force them off that property. So if WashDOT gave us the permission to trespass them off of their property, we would do so. But right now, we don't have permission to do that, just like if they were on Jim Bailey's private property, or Ruth's, or mine, you would need my permission to trespass them off. So we are trying to get the state to give us permission to do so. If so, we will do our best to move them along. We are going to sign a contract tonight to get our first 20 low-barrier shelter beds, and low-barrier shelter beds mean they could actually do those sorts of things in the shelter. That's the definition of low barrier, whether you get them to go there or not. And then, as you know, this isn't, you know, we've got the court system that has tied our hands completely, especially with the campers and all sorts of stuff, and, you know, our police department spends hours and hours and hours trying to make this better in our community. So right now, we're trying to get WashDOT to give us permission. As of this day, we do not have it. In fact, we talked about it today at the directors, and as far as our parks department and our folks that would clean that up are concerned that is WashDOT's property. The easement that runs outside of the boundary of the highway, they own more than just the highway. They own quite a ways out on both sides.
Would it help if I brought you the map to show you that it's actually your property? Because perhaps we could put up signs that say no overnight parking?
Yeah, you can bring us the maps that you have, and if somebody's on our property, again, we still have, until we get a low-barrier shelter up under the Boise case, we're still not allowed to move them off of our property either until the low-barrier shelter set up, but we should figure out where the property lines are down there. I haven't been out there to find the property corners and figure out where they all sit, but it's been our opinion that that's the WashDOT, that's WashDOT property.
We have volunteered to clean up the waste and the garbage. However, the police said be careful because it could be considered their property, so...
Listen, we can't even mow a locomotive park without taking our police officers down to protect our parks people when we go and do that, so...
Thank you for listening.
Yeah, and again, we will continue to do our best, and you're more than willing to leave us any of the maps you have or photos that you have, and we will take another look at it, and if there's something that we think we can do legally. One of the most complicated things, I've said this a number of times, is you just watched the swearing-in ceremony, and they all swore to uphold the laws of the State of Washington and the city of Wenatchee, and some of those laws don't work very well for us, and it puts us and your police department in a very difficult situation. So I appreciate you being here, and we will do the absolute best that we can within the letter of the law to try to help that area.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Kim.
Thank you for coming.
All right. Anybody else wish to address the council on something that's either on tonight's agenda or not? See no other takers, because I don't think Glenn's going to testify. Our first item today, and I guess we should have perhaps Councilmember Roganostian and Councilmember Poyer, you guys want to come up to the front here so we can sort of sort through committee assignments? We have someplace, I have a list.
I took yours.
Did you take mine?
Yeah.
Sit down, Rox. All right, so we sort of took a shot at this. I don't know how good we did. I know with respect to council meetings, you guys are all on those boards, council workshops are on the third Thursdays of the month. Finance Committee, I always like to have the new council members on finance, so for me, that would be Top and Mike. And then Jose, of course, as you know, drives a bus, and he has a hard time making meetings that aren't after three, so I sort of left him on finance. He could never make the Public Works Committee meeting, so I don't know if that's okay with the council member, but that's the reason we did that. Terms of public safety, that would leave Keith and Linda, you know, Jose, again, we can move those around. Public Works is the other big one, which would have Top, but Top shouldn't sit on both finance and Public Works.
He shouldn't?
He shouldn't, because those are the two big ones, right? So we should have three on one and three on the other? Right? So Mark, Travis, and Linda, can you make Tuesday morning meetings once a month? Keith, you probably can't, could you?
That one's still difficult for me, and...
So how about if you're an alternate at that one?
Yeah, I'm an alternate now, and that does work.
Okay, so we'll remove Top from Public Works, leave him on finance, and put Linda in that place, if that makes it everybody. Keith, you want to continue to solid waste?
Yes, please.
Okay. Top, Health District, you okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's your regional board. Those are the guys that make sure you're doing everything right in your kitchen, right?
Your Honor?
Yeah.
I think you'll be a good fit.
I am unable to attend Tourism and Promotion Board anymore. I have a conflict on that time.
So let's get down, so Transportation Council, Mike, are you doing that?
Yes.
You're good with that?
Sorry.
So Community Action, we don't really have anybody. Does anyone have an interest in Community Action? Second Wednesday at noon?
Yeah, it has me, but I have a conflict with that.
The one I'm looking at doesn't have anybody.
Oh, perfect.
I got an updated version.
Thank you.
Anybody have a thought on that?
May I ask what Community Action is?
So they do all the programs for helping the poor people get, or the, under the median income level, get help with utilities and food. Help me out with the other stuff that they do.
Some shelter, food bank.
Food bank, shelter.
Utility program.
Voucher programs, yeah. So all the folks that get in the voucher program for temporary housing. Is that one you could do, Top? You want to give that a try?
Second Wednesdays at noon, and how long do those meetings...
Those probably last an hour.
Hour, yeah. They really are pretty good about keeping it to an hour.
So Top, we're going to put you on there for now.
Yeah.
And give it a shot, and if for some reason during the middle of the year, if it's not working, let us know.
And I'm an alternate to that one, and that's fine, so Top, if you can't make it to that, you just give me a shout, and then I can jump in and fill in for you.
Disability Board, okay? Mark and Jose, that's been working well. I don't know that we ever have anybody on Economic Development District, so I think we can, I'm not sure we participate a lot in that. Fireman's pension, Mike, how'd you get on that already? All right. Grievance Committee.
Thank you, Ruth.[1400.83][1400.83](laughter)
Link Board, so Mark, you want to sit on link?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. Lodging tax, this is one that, Mark, we have you on that. You want to keep doing that?
Sure.
And do we need an alternate for that?
It would be nice.
Travis, can you be an alternate for that or not? You find that a bit of a conflict with your new job?
3:00 PM, I can pull that.
Okay.
No, it's, actually, it's noon.
Every other one, the third? No, I can't. It's noon.
Yeah, it's noon.
So I'll, Mark, I'll be the alternate to that.
Okay.
That might make some sense based on sort of what was going on last year. So I'll be the alt for Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Masawa will be Linda still. Museum Board, Mark, do you want to continue to do that?
Yeah, I'm good for one more year.
Okay. Disability Board is me. Public Facility District, it can only be me from here, so I think we should stick with that. Elder Regional Water, Rivercom, it sounds like Travis is going to do that, but Mike's going to be a, how would you say, a very active alternate? Is that the right term?
Excellent.
TPA, is that one, Travis, that you can't do?
Correct.
So this has Top on there. Top, do you want to do Tourism?
Yeah, yes.
You're going to spend all your lunches at, okay, so we'll leave Top there. Stormwater is Keith. Downtown Association, Travis, can you still do that?
Second Wednesday in the morning, yes.
Okay. Chamber of Commerce is Keith.
I'll do no on that.
Okay.
Mayor, to appoint the TPA, so there needs to be two.
Oh, I knew that.
And again, that's a noon.
So TPA, so we got Top. Who else wants to do TPA?
I'll do it if nobody else has time.
All right. Okay. Does that make you happy now?
Yeah.
Okay, you're welcome. All right, did we get through most of all that? So at the first meeting in January, we will then adopt this by resolution, so you guys will all be voting members of those boards on the, what day do we meet in January? 13th. Oh, as of the 13th.
And we need to...
Unless you want to make a motion now to make it official, is there any reason we You want to wait? What if there's a meeting on the 7th?
Yeah, it'd be nice to have it done. Go ahead and adopt.
Would we do that and then formalize a resolution in January? I think we usually done this by resolution.
We do. Yeah, I think the resolution's prepared.
And the other, we need to do mayor pro temp at the first meeting in January as well.
Yeah, it's okay to wait, I think, to wait on that one?
Yeah.
But I think if some of those meetings happen earlier in the year, it would be nice to have a voting representative?
Yeah, you just approve it by motion and then confirm it with a resolution.
Okay. So why don't we just, we'll approve it by motion today, so that'll make it legal, and then we'll adopt a resolution in January? That make sense, Steve? You okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So would a lawful motion be, I make the motion to adopt the council committee assignments as noted by the city clerk, like the way I did that, from our discussion here, and those assignments take effect on January 1, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Bailey, to adopt the city council assignments as presented today and as kept track of by the city clerk, to be effective on January 1 of 2022. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Yes?
I don't remember.
Jim.
Jim, Councilmember Bailey.
Yes. And so you guys are free to go. If you want to stay for the meeting, you can. In terms of your committee assignments, I would suggest you maybe say hi to Laura and Tammy and get you hooked up with whoever those folks are, so they'll get you on the email calendars for when meetings are, and get you agendas and all that stuff through your city email account. So hopefully that happens sooner rather than later. All right, thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right. Action items. We've got a couple of multifamily tax exemptions. Who's doing that? Glenn?
I have a small, short PowerPoint for this. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Glenn DeVries, Community Development Director. We have two multifamily tax exemption agreements to review. The first is with the Deer Haven LLC, the application for an eight-year multifamily tax exemption program. The project's located in the target area for our multifamily tax program. It's 137 units on 1705 Stella Avenue. The project's in various stages of construction, and Resolution Number 202140 would authorize the city to execute a multifamily housing limited property tax exemption agreement with an applicant. That's the first one before you. The second one is for a multifamily tax exemption agreement with Eider Properties LLC. This application is for the 12-year multifamily tax program, which allows for either low income or moderate income. The applicant must commit to rent... The applicant must commit to renting or selling at least 20% of the multifamily housing units as affordable housing units to low and moderate income households, and the property must satisfy that commitment. There's, on a yearly basis, we must receive verification in the form of the number of persons in the household, the gross, adjusted gross family income, and the size of the unit on a yearly basis to make sure that we're meeting those provisions. We get a HUD provides a number as far as the allowable rent that can be charged, and then you run that through the calculation. So that is something that we have to verify every year. There are three project locations, one at 1417 Fifth Street for 14 units, one at 1013 Fifth Street for seven units, one, and then the others are 1101, 1105 Red Apple Road for 84 units. These three projects would designate 105 affordable units to the city in the next 12 years. This is for staff. This is exciting because this is our first multifamily tax exemption application for affordable units, which are greatly needed in the Valley.
So they, this is the first one that's taken the 12-year make it affordable versus the eight-year?
Correct.
Got it.
So all of the Eider projects are within the designated residential target area. They're in various stages of construction, and Resolution Number 2021 and dash 41 would authorize the city to execute the agreement with the applicant. So you have two resolutions in front of you, 202140 and 202141. You can choose how you'd like to, whether you'd like to bundle those, but staff is recommending approval and that the applicants have met the requirements under city code to apply and receive authorization under those provisions for our program. Any questions I can answer?
Jim and I have the same question. Do you want to go?
Your turn.
So the eight-year one, were we looking at maybe changing that based on the fact that we've got a lot of building going on and maybe the...
It is.
Property tax exemption isn't necessary anymore? Have we worked through that at all?
We haven't, and one of the things we discussed was the, in order to do some analysis on this as far as the last city council discussion, it would be analysis that would be done with our comprehensive plan update.
Got it, okay.
Which is a very lengthy and detailed analysis. The council could certainly decide to change that as earlier than our comprehensive plan update. One of the things you'll find under the Growth Management Act, under the new provisions that were adopted, is that we're going to have to show how we're targeting in more detail some of the affordable, low-income and moderate-income households in a way we haven't before, and how we're addressing that need, why we're not meeting that need. One of the ways to do that is to relook at this ordinance, because I think it is, it can be shown that multifamily housing is being built even without this exemption in the Valley. So certainly an option that staff thinks is worth analyzing is maybe doing a, one of two things, a hybrid program that maybe, maybe you have to get the market rate, eight year, you have to do 50% of your units also as affordable, or perhaps it's simply all affordable units. So it's something, as we meet with you, Mayor, to look at our...
When does the next comp plan get updated?
So that would be, it has to be done by 2026. We'll be doing, starting that process in 2024, but we don't have to wait that long. We can hold a workshop and talk about this. We won't have the detailed analysis.
Right.
But if there's interest in changing it, we can certainly change it sooner. There's also going to be new guidelines and guidance from the state put out in 2022 on this tool, so we would have access to that, and we could put that on a list of things to review next year if you'd like.
So why don't we, why don't we plan on having a work session sometime next year to talk about it? You know, I, it was interesting, I got a phone call today, I won't tell you who it was from, but I know staff has had a couple discussions, you know, we've raised the sewer connection fees, we've raised the water connection fees, to sort of get closer to market because we had them low to incentivize all of the multifamily buildings that we've done, and I think we've done a great job. Well, we've sort of brought those quite a bit closer to market, so, you know, maybe this is still the incentive we need to keep, to sort of keep us in that, in the market for making sure that we're getting units built. So I think that's an interesting discussion to have, you know, maybe February or April at our work session to talk about, something along those lines, just to get an update on what's going on.
Sure enough. If I can coordinate with the mayor's office on when the new resource materials from the state are being put out, it would be great to have access to those resources at the same time. That'd be a great discussion. We'll make sure that's in our work program.
Perfect. I'm excited for the 12-year. I know that's the first one we've done since, I think, I've been mayor, so that's, I'm glad they decided to do that.
I have a, I have a clarifying question. So it's 105 tax-exempted units, correct? How many in total?
100, they're doing every single one of their units as affordable units.
Okay.
So not even a percentage.
So there's not, like, just fair market value apartments being, or units being built?
Correct, these are all...
For Eiders on the 12-year, those are all being the affordable.
Correct. The other proposal is 137 units for the eight-year at market rate.
So the incentive we've always done is just build something, and we'll give you a property tax exemption because we need housing, and then that's the eight-year exemption. So that's the one that Widener would have got at Riverside 9 and Riverside 6 and most of the major developments since we've been around, I think, had taken advantage of the eight-year. That just gets us units. These guys have said for a 12-year, it's an exemption, it's just a really reduced property tax obligation. They're willing to do the low-income housing and hit the AMI calculations and all that sort of stuff. So they're getting more of a property tax exemption, but they're also having reduced rental rates. So that was a business decision that they made.
Yeah.
Did I say that correctly, Glenn?
Correct.
Our close, correct?
Very good, Mr. Mayor.
All right, any other questions for Glenn? If not, I think we should deal with these separately, so I will entertain a motion for Action Item A.
Your Honor, I move for City Council to adopt Resolution Number 2021-40, authorizing the execution of a multifamily housing limited property tax exemption agreement with FNWD Deer Haven LLC.
Second.
Motion by council member Harold, second by council member Sparza, to adopt Resolution 2021-40, authorizing the execution of a multifamily housing limited property tax exemption agreement with FNWD Deer Haven LLC. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then the one for Mr. Eider.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to adopt Resolution Number 2021-41, authorizing the execution of a multifamily housing limited property tax exemption agreement with Eider Properties LLC.
Second.
Motion by council member Sparza, second by council member Hornby, to adopt Resolution 2021-41, authorizing the execution of a multifamily housing limited property tax exemption agreement with Eider Properties LLC. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you.
And you've got, there's still a couple more items. You've got the appointments for the, what are we appointing? Historic Preservation Board.
Correct, and we're very pleased to have three members interested in continuing to serve on their capacity. They do a great job for the city. We have Darlene Baker, Wendy Priest, and Heather Austenson, and it would be for a three-year term ending in December 31, 2024, and we would recommend that they be reappointed for an additional three years.
Any discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to pass Resolution Number 2021-42, designating the reappointment of Darlene Baker, Wendy Priest, and Heather Austenson to each serve another three-year term ending December 31, 2024.
Second.
Motion by council member Huffaker, second by council member Bailey, to adopt Resolution 2021-42, designating the reappointment of Darlene Baker, Wendy Priest, and Heather Austenson to each serve another three-year term ending December 31, 2024 on the Historic Preservation Board. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And a low-barrier shelter, Glenn? This is great news.
So, let's see, next slide here. So we're pleased to be before you this evening with our first contract for a low-barrier shelter. If you recall, when we were looking at the white papers for the local option tax, one of the primary impetus was to establish low-barrier shelters to look at or addressing the unsheltered population, which in the summer count was 98 persons. We know going into this that we needed multiple providers, multiple locations in order to meet that count, meet that need. We were approached by the Wenatchee Rescue Mission, which I think a lot of you are familiar with that location, in South Wenatchee, South Wenatchee Avenue. They are proposing to operate, oh, forgive me just a second. Scott Johnson, the director of the Wenatchee Rescue Mission, was kind enough to attend this evening, and he's available for questions and to introduce himself.
Oh, good.
I'll go through this proposal, and then Scott can add anything he'd like and answer any questions. I appreciate you being here, Scott. The proposal is to operate a 20-bed low-barrier shelter. Five of the beds will be held empty for law enforcement referrals, so East Wenatchee and Wenatchee both would have the ability to bring folks who are in need to the shelter. It's a 24-hour facility, has food as well. Case management would be progressive but not required, and would begin, this would begin officially under the contract under January 1st, would operate under low-barrier principles, staff training, which is so important, would be required. Program policies would be reviewed and approved by the city, and participate in requirements for data sharing, be providing progress reports on goals and metrics, and participate in wraparound services. Funding sources, we've reviewed the variety of funding. There are some remaining funds under a fund category called Affordable Housing for All. Schlain County has ended that funding source for us, but we do have a few remaining funds there we would use should this be approved. But our primary funding source would be the local option tax from both cities. The cost for this contract would be $100,000 for a two-year period for providing the 20-bed capacity. Scott, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, when I came, I've got to say, it's been a pleasure working with the city, and thank you for allowing me to come to the meeting. And Glenn, it's been great coming from the city of Los Angeles. City council meetings and trying to get in and get things done is a little more difficult than it has been here. Been here seven months, and we've already come up with a low-barrier shelter, and that was one of the questions I first asked when I got here. We're very excited to start this, and my hope is to increase those beds, actually, once I'm in there and see how we're going to run it, is to bring in Cott and things like that to help even more so. I have been out working with people that are in the motorhomes and in the encampments, talking about the low-barrier shelter, talking about their situation, and with the inevitable, what's going to happen to them should they continue there, also letting them know to keep it clean, because that's one thing that they're not doing very well at the moment. They do have two leaders of the group that I talk to often, so I'm going out every week doing that. So part of the low barrier too is I was able to get one of the motorhomes off the street. He is now living in his motorhome on our property, however, and being case managed, and eventually going to go back home, which is not here in Wenatchee. So that looks like in February, but we are trying to make more room to get some of them off the street that want help. And in that shelter, that's where I'm at.
Anything you'd like to add?
So do you anticipate, like, by the middle of January, that you would have maybe as many as 15 people in your shelter?
I would hope, that's the hope. Right now, you know, in order for us to do this, we're going to have to establish some kind of credibility, as they say, street cred, and that's why I started immediately hitting all the people I could find on the streets, and right now, they trust me. They are very much assisting me. They come down to the mission already. Someone didn't know the mission was there, which was a sad situation, and so they're coming in for meals. We just opened our showers for women, so they come into the men's facility and now can take showers, which is getting the women a little more into our facility and understanding it's not dangerous, it's not the safe place for them to go. So we are slowly but surely getting there, and I think that we'll have about that, I would guess. So there are some that really want to come, and then some of our, we have some families that are down in the tents as well. We have moms with adult children who have disabilities of some types, and a couple husband and wives, and I'm still trying to decide if I'm going to make, have them put their tents on our grass out there, so that at least they can stay intact. Not a big fan of letting people stay outside when it's that cold, or cold for me anyway. California, this is crazy, but yeah, we're trying to see if that will work and try to get some of the tents up on the property, and I'll have a lot more control than they are in right now, so they are aware of our rules. However, our rules are low. I know one of our citizens was talking there about the rules. We have lowered our rules quite a bit in order to be successful.
And for clarity, we do have a certification process for what a low-barrier facility is, and Scott and I have worked through those, and he's comfortable with those provisions, and so if anybody were to ask or what have you, it's very transparent.
I can't think of eight more people who would want to make sure you're more successful than the seven council members and the mayor right now. So I hope that this works as good for you as it works for us, and that we start getting some people into wraparound services and get them off the streets and get them in a place that's safer for them and is better for everybody.
And I know that a lot of people think this is a solution. We're not going to get everybody off the street.
No.
But my goal is to take a big chunk and get as many as I can, but we're not going to solve everybody.
No.
But we're also not going to do the definicious stupidity, which is Skid Row, where I come from in Los Angeles. We have 78,000, and it's growing. We want, I don't want to want that at all, and so we have some special things in place to help us with that and try to get people in, and then also keep, it sounds funny, but keep people out. Any kind of dumping from other cities, I'm immediately, I have the cell phone of the police chief, and I call him, and I know that they're dumping, especially if it's a police officer from another city, so we need to hold other cities accountable and come up with a program for that, too, that we did in L.A. That was successful.
Do you have any sort of thought on the number of those that may have been dumped that are here currently?
Since I've been here, there's been four.
Okay.
That I'm aware of.
Got it.
And so, but I did address the city, and I did address the police department. I'm not afraid to pull them out, so.
I know Jose, being a bus driver, was aware of quite a bit of that going on during various times during the year, so it'll be interesting to see how it works. As I read through the contract, I really didn't see anything about the wraparound services, so I'm kind of curious how the, how the implementation of that, just to make sure that we're getting those people those services and getting those connections. Do we have a place where they can actually come to the facility and meet them on-site and...
Oh, yes.
And provide those services to there? Because I know that was one of the things we talked about with low barrier, was wanting to make sure that those people were present and made those connections.
And part of that contract in there is being able to hire a case manager, but the unemployment like it is, and McDonald's is having a hard time hiring people, so I talked to Sean, who's the executive director of Catholic Charities, and he and I are going to work together, and reuse his case management to help us get those wraparound services. In fact, I'm creating an office for them in the mission now, so that there's a private space for everybody to go and have the services for them.
So many times, it's just a regular continual contact with somebody who can help them, right? And it's no the first 74 times, and if it's yes on the 75th time, we've had success, right? So I think that's the...
I've seen it. I've seen people 10 years, and finally they come in and they're done, so.
And it is in the contract and in the scope of work, and it's an ongoing partnership with the Wenatchee Rescue Mission, that we're going to be working collaboratively to have those wraparound services there. Scott's done this before, this isn't new to him, and has extensive work in California. He's already been contacting these folks to do this very thing, but we'll be partners and working on getting those wraparound services on-site as well.
Come back and march and tell us how it's going. Come back and march and tell us how it's going.
I sure will.
Don't even make an appointment, just show up and come to Citizens Comment, and we'll give you some time and let us know how it's going.
Can I just say thank you very much? I really appreciate the fact that you've stepped up to do this. This is a really important thing, and it's not—we're not done yet, we need more, we know that, but I really appreciate all that you're doing.
Thank you.
And it's going to help our police department, too. It's going to give them one more tool, and hopefully we can get some of these people off the street.
Sergeant Miller already called me, or comes to my house and picks me up, so we're already working on it, and I hope to, at some point, expand so we can actually do more services. And that's—we're also putting—we're looking at some permanent supportive housing on property that we're at now, the five acres, so.
Excellent. What's the name of Kulis? Is he? Thought you were going to read a motion there for him.
I will.
Okay.
Glenn, I noticed in the resolution here, or in this description, that it's for homeless men. Where are we in terms of downline, having these same kind of services available for women?
Yeah, sorry. That's a good question, and we—there are some facilities currently for women, women and children, but it's intended that the new—the next step, should that occur, Salvation Army or wherever it may occur, would be for both women, men and women.
And Glenn, correct me if I'm wrong, doesn't the YWCA currently have low-barrier shelter for women?
They—correct. And we actually—they are a contractee for the city of Wenatchee that we entered into to help support them this summer. And then there's also Sage, who does some similar services. But there is additional need, certainly, and the next step, and the next contract we hope to have with you, before you this year, this next year, would provide for both men and women.
Scott, a quick question for you. In your ballpark estimation, what's the ratio of men to women homeless on the street?
Well, right now, at the encampment, there's—last I checked on Friday, there was 10 women and 22 men in that area itself, so it's pretty close. There's quite a few women, more than you would think.
Yeah.
A lot of the women are staying in single encampments by themselves, so down by the river, you might have three or four women sticking together and another three or four women, so they're kind of spread out a little bit because of the victimization that's happening. So—but the good thing is I was able to get some, actually, some city members to come out with me and some church to go out with me now, is I'm bringing women with me to start talking to the women, because they're afraid of me until they get to know me, but even then, very standoffish. But the women going out with me now on Fridays are actually making an impact, so.
I'm sorry I don't have the numbers here, but the majority of the unsheltered homeless are men, and so that ratio is higher there, and maybe that speaks to the fact that they are sheltering together for safety. But the ratio is predominantly men, but there are definite needs for women, women and children.
Thank you.
All right. Any more questions for Glenn or Scott? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move for City Council to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with the Wenatchee Rescue Mission to provide 20 low-barrier emergency shelter beds for adult homeless men for a two-year period. Five of the 20 beds will be held empty and reserved for law enforcement referrals from the cities of East Wenatchee and Wenatchee.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Huffaker, to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Wenatchee Rescue Mission to provide 20 low-barrier emergency shelter beds for adult homeless men for a two-year period. Five of the 20 beds will be held empty and reserved for law enforcement referrals from the cities of East Wenatchee and Wenatchee. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Glenn. Good luck, my friend.
Good job.
All right. Next up is approving a contract to build a new digester at our wastewater treatment plant. So Jeremy, Jessica, I'm not sure who's coming up.
This is the $14 million digester.
Yep. It's the $14 million one.
Not the 16.
And just for those of you that don't always watch this, this has already gone through the Finance Committee and the Public Works Committee, so this is the third time some of the folks have seen this. Jeremy, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Jeremy Hoover, Senior Utility Engineer for the city, here to talk about the new digester that we're planning to build out of the wastewater treatment plant. This has been in front of both Public Works Committee and Finance Committee. It's been in front of the council a couple of times as part of the consultant design process. The project is going to build a 40-foot, 45-foot diameter tank that is going to be used for digested sludge, a three-story building, one of which will be underground basement, housing various forms of equipment, thickening devices, controls, and other apparatuses associated with the digest system at the solids handling building in the plant. The project was advertised for bid in October. Bids were opened on November 10th, and the low bid contractor was Apollo Inc. for a total after adjusted tax rate of 8.6% was $14,410,134. The high bid was from McLaurin Sons at $17,398,704. These numbers are above the engineer's estimate, which was approximately $13.2 million, but this is a critical facility that the wastewater treatment plant needs to be able to not only continue operations into the future, but to allow us the ability and flexibility to operate the plant in a manner that'll allow us to maintain the other digesters. What I have in front of you now is a request to authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract with Apollo Inc. The funding from the project will come from a SRF loan that we are in the process of negotiating now, and you will see in front of you in January. The total dollar value of construction, the $14.4 million, that is construction only, that does not include any construction management services or staff time associated with the project or any potential changes that may or may not happen during construction. However, I have to emphasize, this is a very important piece of equipment that we desperately need at the treatment plant. So I'm here to ask you to—excuse me, I apologize. I'm here to recommend that the city council award the contract for the construction of the wastewater treatment plant, digester four, to Apollo Inc., and authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract on behalf of the city.
Any questions for Jeremy? I know it's not often that we spend $14 million at a council meeting, but again, this has been discussed at Finance and Public Works, so it's not unexpected. And as Jeremy said, a very important piece to add to the wastewater treatment plant and allow us to also repair some of the older digesters that are in need of repair. So as expensive as this is, it's something that's needed.
So I'd entertain a motion, if we had one.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to award the contract for construction of the wastewater treatment plant, digester number four, project number 1810 to Apollo Inc., and further authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract on behalf of the city.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Asparza, second by Councilmember Harold, to award the contract for construction of the wastewater treatment plant, digester number four, project number 1810 to Apollo Inc., and further authorize the mayor to sign construction contracts on behalf of the city. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy. Appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
All right. We have two relatively small annexations to deal with this morning—or this morning, afternoon, this evening. Two small 10 percenters. I will—just for the council's memory, we accepted a 10% petition out in the Sunny Slope area probably eight or nine months ago, maybe it was a year ago, I don't quite remember. We accepted the 10% with boundary. The developers in the area could not get enough signatures to get us to the 60% threshold that we would have needed to get that to the finish line, so they have come back and said, well, we're going to try a smaller one. So the second one is a smaller one with some of the same properties that couldn't quite get to the 60% last time, and then the fair one is a different one, so. Mr. Parsons, all yours.
Thank you. This first annexation was the property owner's Fair Properties LLC, and they submitted a 10% petition for their property. They are located at 1697 Northwestern Avenue. It's just north of the Western Mini Storage, and they're hoping to add a building and, of course, connect to sewer, and that's their reason for annexing. And our—the red boundary, of course, is a red line in this image, is around their property. It's our practice to look at ways to expand the boundary when we get these in, and as it turned out, there were two annexation agreements in the vicinity. The first one is the Western Mini Storage. As I understand, there's multiple versions of annexations agreements that are out there. This is an older version where the property owner agrees to sign the—any petitions and not oppose any annexation proposals. There's another one down the street at 1618 McKittrick Street. This is a different agreement that, as I read it, grants power of attorney to the city clerk to sign annexation petitions on their behalf, which, of course, we have—the city therefore has more control over. And so I've brought several options to you in this packet, and the first one would be to include all of those, and this is something that we frequently add in other properties to an annexation when there's the ability to do so. I've included a table here, I've included two assessment years. We're right kind of at the transition period from one assessment year value to the other, and so I just wanted to include both, just to kind of be clear, depending on how a petition might be evaluated. And so it would be valid, as you see this first row, for the 10% petition, all those values with just Fair Properties' signature. It's a valid expansion of the boundary of the 10% petition. And then also with the three signatures for 1618 McKittrick Street, 1730 McKittrick, and then the applicant to 1697 Northwestern, that makes, depending on the assessment year, either 64 or 74%, and so that'd be a valid petition that presumably would be certified by the assessor's office. There's a new factor—well, there's—we don't always work with these annexation agreements. The other thing that's kind of unique about this one is—you may have heard, there's a boundary review board now. It's formed. They have—last I checked, they had four of the five members, and they have a—anyway. So this is something that we'll be sending a notice of intent to annex to them as part of the process, and they'll need to take some action on it. There is a threshold in RCWs for boundary review boards, where if it is—if the boundary, the assessed value in the boundary is less than $2 million and less than 10 acres, they can choose to not take an action. I think they just let it continue on. I think they—I don't know exactly the action they take, but they don't have to make the same decision that they do when they invoke jurisdiction. And so that's what I've included on this lower one, is whether it meets those criteria. You're kind of looking for yeses there, being under those two criteria. And so this larger boundary would be above the threshold, and presumably they would need to make a decision on this. And so that would—basically what that means is more time for the applicant to get through the process, which is why I've included additional options, just on behalf of—for the sake of the applicant, to not lengthen out the process. One option, labeled as option two, is you could just annex that one property that is below the $2 million, under $10 million, and so that would be an easier process forward for them to get through to the finish line. Another one, and this is unique to this particular situation, because there are two annexation agreements, that you could go ahead and just move forward with their property alone, and then you could—the city clerk, as I understand it, Steve Smith, our legal counsel, agrees that the city clerk, I believe, could sign a 10% petition initiating this other boundary I have in purple here. That's my understanding of that agreement as I read it. And so that would be something that could be—you could, you know, just following it, could annex, still get the same area in the city. Of course, it takes a little more staff time to process these two instead of one, but it's an option, and so I wanted to bring that option to you. The second one, of course, would be subject to the—be above the threshold for the boundary review board review, but no one's waiting on the decision. They haven't applied for annexation, so I thought that's how I wanted to break it up, and those are the three options provided in your packet.
Well, it seems with the annexation agreements, I don't know why we would be concerned about the boundary review board, that option one is a pretty logical boundary.
Great. And my reading of the criteria they use in RCW, certainly this is—would be fitting.
Yeah.
I don't sit on that board, but it seems like something they would support, and so it's probably a good thing, yeah, to go forward.
I have a question for our public works staff. Our public works director. So with respect to the solo portion of this annexation, assuming that we adopt option one, which is the one that Matt has in front of us, and it's assuming that the boundary review board invokes jurisdiction and denies it, would we prevent Mr. Fair from hooking up to the sewer even though it's right in front of his house or right in front of his office building? Wouldn't we allow that to happen whether this annexation goes all the way through or not?
He could—
From a city policy?
He could hook to our sewer. He would be under the code language that requires him to pay the 150%.
Yeah. But we would not deny Mr. Fair the opportunity to hook up to the sewer.
Right.
So if that's his sole purpose for doing this, then I think we should do option one, and if the boundary review board invokes jurisdiction and it fails, he'll still get what he wants, which is to hook up to our sewer at a slightly higher fee.
I just can't see any—my—any basis for a boundary review board to deny this annexation. We already have the streets in the city, so it's not like we're cherry picking.
Right.
It's a logical boundary. It's on two sides of the current city limits.
Right.
I just—
I'm just trying to protect the property owner who wants a certain thing.
I know, but I guess what I'm saying is, I'm not gun shy about a boundary review board. It's just another damn process that the state set up that gets in the way of logical government.
Yeah, well, I agree.
That's our state.
Yeah.
I guess my only question is how much more work is option three versus option one, which both, in the end, come up with the same results, but option three probably carries a lot more work.
Yes. It's the second annexation, it's more work for staff. I would be inclined to do option one and let the boundary review board do what the boundary review board does, assuming that the fifth street mini storage signs, and we have the other one to sign, and I agree with Councilmember Kulis, this is a good first chance at the boundary review board to do their work, and at the end of the day, if it doesn't work and Mr. Fair hooks up, we might come back and just do a one and see what happens. I mean, we're just sort of figuring it out, but I agree with Councilmember Kulis that I think we should take the logical boundary, which is the one that option one has provided to us, get the signatures from those that said they would sign, and go ahead and move forward and see what the boundary review board does.
Is the green city and the white is all county?
Yes.
Correct. Yeah. I agree. You know, it's always been my general principle that, you know, when we do an annexation, take as much as we can get. We've got, you know, four, three, four, five property owners or parcels, I know, those are all individual property owners, but they're willing to be annexed, and like, I can't imagine that there's anything out there that—
Well, let me throw a wrinkle in there, because as you know, the storage facility is actually being sold currently.
But Matt's talked to both the potential owner and the previous owner, and they're both willing to sign.
And that's under an agreement that they have to sign, right?
Yeah, as I understand it, it runs with the land.
Yeah. They're required to sign.
Yeah, I spoke with the current owner, and I did contact the—I got the number of the seller or the buyer. They prefer to communicate through the current owner, but I've been told that they're amenable to it. owner, but I've, I've been told that they're amenable to it.
And I'm just kind of curious if the sale goes through prior to the annexation versus after.
Well, let's have to get the, we'll get the signature right now, we, we got enough on the 10%, so when they bring the 60, they'll have to bring it based on the registered owners. If it sells in the middle, we'll have to change it, but hopefully we get it back quickly and.
Okay. That's the only thing I could think of that the board could have an issue with.
Yeah.
Well, it'll be a good test case for the boundary review board.
And JAB will be the same thing, right after this will be another one, and there's a third one that I know about that's coming right away, so they're all, they're all sort of coming in little smaller hunks here.
And, and it is an option that the board does not invoke jurisdiction.
Yeah.
This will be their first one, though, I have a feeling they're hot to.
Yeah.
But you're right, this is one they shouldn't even invoke jurisdiction.
Yeah, just let the 45 days go, or whatever it is, and.
But I, chances are they will, just because they want to do something, they're all hot to go.
Well, there may be another government agency yet to be named that may request them to invoke jurisdiction.
No comment.
All right, so I think the consensus is option one out of, on that motion, so I'd entertain one.
All right, Your Honor, I make a motion for the city council to approve the annexation boundary as proposed by staff and labeled as option one, in response to the 10% annexation petition for property located in an unincorporated area northeast of the intersection of McKittrick Street and Northwestern Avenue, to require the adoption of the proposed zoning regulations as is set forth in the comprehensive plan of the city, and to require the assumption of existing indebtedness to the city by the area to be annexed.
Second.
Motion by council member Bailey, second by council member Harold, to approve the annexation boundary as proposed by staff and labeled as option number one, in response to the 10% petition, excuse me, the 10% annexation petition for property located in an unincorporated area northeast of the intersection of McKittrick Street and Northwestern Avenue, to require the adoption of the proposed zoning regulations as is set forth in the comprehensive plan of the city, and to require the assumption of existing indebtedness of the city by the area to be annexed. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. JAB investors.
All right, we have another annexation here, like the mayor was saying earlier, this is sort of the, the second take on this annexation from the same property owner. I just have one option, one boundary available this time, and it will, it'll, it'll meet the requirements, will have, it's an adequate 10% petition with just the, the signature of the JAB investors, and then it's our understanding that the JAB investors, Blair Property and Gray City Church will, will sign, and that will produce about an 81% petition value, which would be passing. And this one is below the thresholds, under, less than 2 million, less than 10 acres, the threshold we're talking about, just the last one.
So that means this is exempted from the boundary review board process?
They may, I think the operative word is may, let it continue through.
Yeah.
I think they can.
They have the ability to just administratively pass on dealing with it.
Yeah, something like that.
Because it's so small.
Without, without having to wait that full.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there's a 45 day for them to invoke jurisdiction.
Yeah.
And we made this one easy, there's no options for you guys to have to choose from, so.
Well, I, that was, my, my question is, is I'm a little confused here, because we do have two maps, are those two different options, one shows?
Oh, yeah, good, good question, yes.
Right away creep or something here?
No, yeah, the, basically, what was on the 10% petition, and then what's the staff proposal, yeah, good, good question. We are including a little bit, just the adjacent right of Mel, right of Way Melody Lane.
Okay, so the second map is the one that comes down.
That's correct, okay, yes.
Yep. All right, so I entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I make a motion for city council to approve the annexation boundary as proposed by staff in response to the 10% annexation petition for property located in the unincorporated area of north of Melody Lane, to require the adoption of the proposed zoning regulations as it is set forth in the comprehensive plan of the city of residential moderate, and to require the assumption of existing indebtedness of the city by the area to be annexed.
Second. Motion by council member Huffaker, second by council member Hornby, to approve the annexation boundary as proposed by staff in response to the 10% annexation petition for property located in an unincorporated area north of Melody Lane, require the adoption of the proposed zoning regulations as is set forth in the comprehensive plan of the city as residential moderate, and to require the assumption of existing indebtedness of the city by the area to be annexed. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Thank you, Matt, thanks for doing all this for us and trying to keep us on the straight and narrow with annexations.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we'll see you two more times on this.
Yep. All right, and our last item before we have a couple of public hearings is our McKittrick Street TIB grant award, so Mr. Jammerman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here on behalf of Jacob Hyler and Ryan Harmon, I told them I could get this to the finish line, so, the mayor said if it didn't get to the finish line, it was going to be my fault, so. We've, we've taken this through the Public Works Committee and the Finance Committee. So we're pleased to announce that we did receive a grant from the TIB this year, it's for the improvement of McKittrick Street. The total project is about 2.9 million, and our grant from the TIB board will be 2.3 million. And so tonight, we're here to recommend that the city council approve the, the project budget, and authorize the mayor to sign the, the TIB board grant agreement forms. We're, we've done, we've done well, we've got spring water, this is a side note, we got, we got spring water two years ago, that's under design, and so now we're just sort of, about every two years, we, we come, we get a nice grant from them, so they, they like what we do here in the city.
Well, this will run up on the backside of Foothills Elementary School, so you get sidewalks on both sides, they'll run up by the adjacent property to our public works site, on both sides, it's, doesn't, and then it'll run all the way up the hill, up to Pershing, so, be a great addition, and then of course, we're doing the McKittrick Street interchange next year.
Yes, we are.
And, and that, and so we've got the money for the underpass as well, so almost all of McKittrick will be completed and done, except for the very top part, which we talked about today at finance a little bit, about the, the top gap from Western down to Pershing, which will be probably a TIB ask in a couple of years, I would guess.
Correct.
So it's always nice to accept grant money, and Brad told me we do have money in the, uh, uh, street fund to do this, so if not, he'll find it.
We'll, our, our big pullout of the arterial street fund probably won't be until construction in '24, so we've.
Okay, have room to.
Yeah, we've got room, we're putting money into that annually.
All right, any questions for Rob? If not, I entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I make a motion for the city council to approve the project budget and authorize the mayor to sign the transportation improvement board grant agreement.
Second.
Motion by council member Hornby, second by council member Asparza, to approve the project budget and authorize the mayor to sign the transportation improvement board grant agreement forms for improvements to McKittrick Street. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Thanks, Rob, thanks for being here. All right, we have two public hearing items, one regarding the adoption of the capital facilities plan, and the second regarding amendments to Wenatchee City Code regarding our comp plan amendments for the year. So for public hearings, we'll first hear from staff, ask questions of staff, we will then turn it over to the members of the public that would wish to address the council on this item, and then we'll turn it back over to the council for any action they may be willing to take. First is regarding the capital facilities plan. Glenn, welcome back.
Thank you. Oh, we have before you the capital facilities plan, which coordinates with and is consistent with the budget, what the city has passed. The plan's a financial document that guides the implementation of the comprehensive plan. Capital facilities are structures, improvements, equipment, or other major assets, including land with a useful life of at least 10 years. Capital improvements are projects that create, expand, or modify a capital facility. This definition applies to projects that cost more than $20,000. City departments that provide capital facilities annually review the plan and projects and coordinate with the city budget. The, the plan purpose, we need to show that it's consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, consistent with a projected population growth and land use plan, and that concurrent with or within six years of the impacts of new developments in order to achieve and maintain our adopted levels of services, and based on sound fiscal policies for the city. And that review has occurred both through the planning commission and through our city budgeting process. So in this updated plan, the capital facility plan before you, we updated the financial tables of all the city team to reflect the city budget, updated the tables for funded and unfunded projects, and updated plan text to delete completed projects, modify existing, and add new projects for the 2022 to 2027 period. Staff recommends approval of the updated capital facility plan, and has a suggested motion for your consideration, and would stand for any questions you might have.
I know we do this annually, and I do my best to prose through it, I didn't find anything that stuck out in terms of something that we missed. That's always the thing, that we miss something. Yeah. Any questions for Glenn? Hearing none, anybody, any member of the audience wish to address the council on this public hearing item regarding the adoption of our capital facility plan for 2022 through 2027? Seeing no members of the audience, I would turn over the council for any action they'd be, be willing to take.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to adopt resolution number 2021-43, adopting the 2022 to 2027 City of Wenatchee Capital Facilities Plan.
Second. Motion by council member Kulas, second by council member Hornby, to adopt resolution 2021-43, adopting the 2022 through 2027 City of Wenatchee Capital Facility Plan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. And our last public hearing is regarding Wenatchee City Code with updates to our comp plan, and so you've got three separate ordinances, Glenn, so why don't you just go ahead and sort of go through the entire, oh, you and Matt, go through the entire document with changes, and then we can deal with those each individually after we take public comment? Does that make sense?
That sounds great, thank you, Mayor.
Yep.
So before you this evening, we have amendments to Title 10, amendments to Title, Section 1120, and amendments to our comprehensive plan, each under different ordinances, and then a resolution. Procedurally, as we went through these, we had a city council workshop on September 17th, 2020, actually starting with the slope protection issue. This is a council-directed item for the planning commission to look at provisions for slope protection. And the city council had workshops on September 17th, 2020, and July 22nd, 2021. The planning commission has had a series of workshops in August 2020, February 2021, August 2021, September 2021, and then October 2021. So they spent a considerable amount of time on this issue. We provided notice as required, did not receive public comments from agencies or public on this issue, and we held a public hearing with the planning commission on November Overall, code changes as recommended by the planning commission. We have changes to better communicate our existing standards for slope protection, figures, clarification on administrative deviation, new standards to bury, better carry on out the tent, you know, when you have a five to seven foot wall, how, how far do you have to go before you can build another one? A maximum slope between walls, minimum separation between the back of a lower wall and the front of an upper, standard for retaining walls and utility easements, and then not providing for walls greater than 14 feet in public, unless in public right of way or part of a public works project. So as the planning commission looked at the issue that they were directed to look at, they looked at the overall code section. And, you know, over time, as the city has had an opportunity to enforce these provisions, we had typical questions or typical issues that came up, and they've come together with a package to address those, those questions or issues, but while they were looking at slope protection ordinance. However, the standard that the planning commission was requested to look at by, by the council, as, as noted before, in the extensive amount of review the planning commission did on this, they, they did not recommend, they unanimously did not recommend approval of the provision below, and that provision is oriented, if you're called, the issue was in rear yards for, for walls that were three feet or higher, that they be set back five feet from a rear property line, and there be a review and process to ensure during an administrative or a quasi-digital review process to ensure that they met those standards. And then there is also a deviation provision for hardship that the planning commission also didn't recommend as part of that, that package on that specific issue. But as I mentioned, they spent a lot of time, they took seriously the direction of the council to look at this issue, and there are a lot of, everyone had concerns, they, and they tried to weigh them impartially and fairly, but it, it came down to their belief that it would be difficult to implement, difficult to enforce, that it would infringe on property rights and strict property owners' ability to utilize their property to the highest and best use, that property owners, they believed that property owners should be able to build up walls to the permitting threshold, that, that this issue is limited in applicability, and that a city surrounded by hills, that doing such a standard may hinder future residential development. So they, you know, they didn't take lightly your, the direction of the council, they looked at this and spent a lot of time debating it, and unanimously shared these concerns, and, and that's why this provision is not part of the recommendation before you. The other things I mentioned, they looked at at the same time and, and saw that there was some real value in providing clarification in the slope protection ordinance, but this, this is one they didn't feel comfortable with for slope protection. If you'd like, I'll continue through the, unless you'd like to have a break, we'll continue through the other changes.
Go through the other ones, and we'll stop and ask questions about the slope and other stuff.
That'd be great. And other components of the zoning code that were amended in this package is updated and revised definitions for dwelling, museums, height, cut and fills walls, and for the fence code, some clarification on fences on top of retaining walls. Additionally, some, as we use our, our new housing standards, we find things that could add some clarification, we've gotten feedback from the Triad Development, and they've, staff, working with the planning commission, the planning commission recommended that there be minimum lot width and depth in the RS for cluster subdivisions, some changes, a 15-foot minimum setback in the RS and RL for cluster subdivisions, a 10-foot minimum rear yard setback off alleys in the RS and RL, some setback exceptions, a five-foot setback to garage face when the side yard's adjacent to an alley, and then some provisions on utility easements in areas of steep terrain. And then moving to comprehensive plan amendments, we found that over time, you, you need to keep up with what your adopted plans and studies are, and so with that, with what's been adopted, we updated those tables with what needs to be adopted and amended by the city. We also have some changes in our housing element to be consistent with where we are currently with our homeless program and our narrative text and several policies. So based on that, it's, we're recommending approval of the planning commission package before you, and Matt and I are happy to answer any questions, provide any clarification that we can.
Glenn, I'm, I'm wondering if any discussion about adjacent properties with new Glenn, I'm wondering if any discussion about adjacent properties with new construction or new development was addressed at all. This is the case that we've run into a couple of times where there's existing neighborhoods, and then a piece of property next to them is developed, and they pile up dirt so that the neighbors end up with retaining walls as a backyard now instead of the view that they once had.
It was extensively discussed by the Planning Commission. They believed that there needed to be, that, you know, there's certain inherent property rights for folks to be able to develop. They thought the existing provisions were appropriate, and that the, especially, there's also provisions now in the code, the housing code update, for, you know, either vegetation or fencing as a buffer, but that the trigger points for when a building permit are required, you know, should be the thresholds for permitting, but that doing something less would be really difficult to enforce over time. So, it was discussed extensively from all different directions through all those different meetings by the Planning Commission.
Thanks. And occasionally, we have one Planning Commission member who sometimes controls the room. I was not, I did not pay attention. Did everyone participate?
Everybody participated. Everybody was very vocal on this issue. There wasn't a single voice. It was, it was really unanimous. A lot of dialogue.
Sometimes I want to ask that question because I know the personalities in the room, so, and I wasn't there, so.
It was, everybody was very vocal on this issue. And again, you know, listed out the meetings, they spent a lot of time. We provided a variety of options on this. When it came down to it, they just, they weren't comfortable with any of the options. And they were happy to see some clarification overall on the code, on some of the confusing points in the slope hazard protection section, but they didn't support the provision I outlined.
Well, I'm going to make a comment that, you know, I appreciate the work, and I always have, since I sat on the Planning Commission at one time, and I know the difficulties that they face in review and making decisions on things. But I guess I'm disappointed in that decision, which basically, the answer to Keith's question was no. And bluntly put, we talk about, you know, property owners', you know, rights and development and so forth. But I, you know, again, like I say, I'm disappointed because other property owners have rights too. And it seems that this does not address an issue that we've had a couple of instances of, and I'm really confident that we're going to have more in the future. And so, you know, the overall proposal here is, you know, I don't have any real problems with, but that one I'm disappointed in.
Any other comments? Keith? Mark? Anybody? Again, I didn't obviously participate in the Planning Commission meeting, and again, because you have developer interest on the Planning Commission, which was the reason I asked the question, because sometimes developer interest can sometimes rule the day, which is why I wanted to make sure that that group had a reasonable conversation about exactly what you're saying, which is, and you know, when you look at the developments that we're going to, you know, the triad development, because they're all being built at once, you shouldn't really have that problem because they're doing it all together. If you've been up there, they were already sort of started to structure the lots. And I think that, you know, the Phillippe one is fairly, so I think going forward, they're going to be these one-off ones, right? They're going to be just this sort of one-off, like, oh, and we're just going to have to do our best to work with those folks, and there are a few changes in there, assuming that you adopt this, and we'll just have to continue to try to have people be good neighbors. And I guess the Planning Commission said you can't regulate everything, and maybe this is one that we should just try to continue to sort of push on. I think drafting regulations to prevent that is a pretty sticky, pretty sticky process to try to go through. And I think staff attempted to do it, and...
Well, I'm going to respectfully disagree. I think there's ways that it could be written, that it could be pretty clear. If you look at what they do in Seattle, there's things they can do to even prevent a building blocking your space that you can see. There's a price to it. I mean, people have to pay for the airspace, but it can be done. And I think there should be ways that we can regulate something as simple as, I have a flat piece of property, and I'm going to pile four feet of dirt on it.
Do we have view corridor anywhere in our town? Any protection of view corridors in our comp plan or zoning code?
No, we don't have a provision in our zoning code, no. We do, you know, our housing code, depending on the type of housing, looks at a variety of design techniques. But that's more oriented to, you know, duplexes and above, although, single-family homes with the housing code update did look significantly at, you know, open space provisions and what have you, to ensure that there's, you know, air or light and open space maintained and required for each unit.
So, are view corridors in bigger cities, are those done by code or done by agreements, covenants between property owners in a subdivision?
Can be both. There was actually a provision up off of, oh, what is it, Skyline, where a plat, based on concerns, had a view corridor regulated, and there are specific heights for certain lots that were put in place for that viewing area. But yes, a community can do it both ways. Can be done privately. It can be, it can be a code requirement for view corridors. You know, you have to look at the analysis of it, though, and it can be pretty complex, and it's, you know, site-specific, and can certainly change depending on the property's perspective and what you're trying to protect as far as a view corridor.
So, let's just talk procedures, procedural here. We had asked the Planning Commission to take a look at something, and they looked at it, and they didn't want to do anything. So, our choices this evening are, we can accept their recommendation in this full package here, and we could still initiate a code amendment. Yeah, because the code can be amended anytime during the year. It's only the plan that's limited to once a year. So, is there anything in the plan policies that we would have to worry about if the council decided it wanted a little more stringent? It wanted to take forward one of the staff proposals?
Yeah, so there wouldn't be a conflict in the comprehensive plan you would have to worry about. So, whether you wanted to take the provision that the Planning Commission rejected and adopted tonight, or whether you wanted to workshop something different at a later date, that would certainly be the council's ability within their...
And I can't say whether I'd be, I'm comfortable with adopting that provision tonight without looking at it again. I don't know. You, Councilmember Huffaker, what?
Because there's nothing written that would specify how it would be implemented, it would be very difficult to adopt it tonight.
So, maybe the thought is, we proceed with this, with the hearing, and ultimately adopt this, and then...
Request they go back and look at that for an amendment?
Well, we workshop with staff your previous work, so we become familiar with it again, and then decide where we want to take it at that point.
So, you're thinking maybe adopting numbers two and three, but not number one?
Well, actually, I was thinking adopting everything as a package here, because we have a package, and then we may go back and modify one of the components.
Got it.
At least we get this part done.
Yeah, okay.
And then come back with a later amendment that would address this specific issue?
Yep.
I'm okay with that.
All right, why don't we, any member of the audience wish to address the City Council on this public hearing item? We got our comprehensive plan update and amendments. I expected a long line of people to come up and give us comments on this one.
Always nice when there isn't.
Yeah. All right, so I guess I'll turn it over to the council for any action they may be willing to take.
So, we're looking at three different motions?
Do them one at a time.
Okay. I would make a motion for the council, City Council, to adopt ordinance number 2021-38, amending Wenatchee City Code Title 10 Zoning.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Bailey, to adopt ordinance 2021-38, amending Wenatchee City Code Title 10 Zoning.
Motion for the City Council.
We got the still adjustment first.
Sorry.
All right.
Getting excited.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Hornby.
Motion for City Council to adopt ordinance number 2021-40, amending City, Wenatchee City Code, Section 11-20-060 easement.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hornby, second by Councilmember Kulas, to adopt ordinance 2021-40, amending Wenatchee City Code, Section 11.20.060 regarding easements. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to pass Resolution Number 2021-44, amending the Wenatchee Urban Area Comprehensive Plan.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Asparza, to adopt Resolution 2021-44, amending the Wenatchee Urban Area Comprehensive Plan. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Do you want to send a little direction back to staff? You want to workshop it one more time? You want to get a small group together to discuss it? What are you thinking? Unclear. This needs to go back through the Planning Commission, unless it has to legally. If we're going to jump on...
Should we workshop what they've done?
Can we at least start off with a workshop and discuss it with staff?
Yeah.
And just come up with at least a clear direction that we would like the Planning Commission, you know, I don't want to exclude them.
Right.
I would like them to be involved with it, but I think, I think they need to have clear direction of why we think this is important.
Right. Yeah, and I, yeah, so I guess we can do stuff. The Planning Commission doesn't have to, you know, you guys are the ultimate authority on this in terms of making the decision, and so, the issue is how, you know, we processed it once.
But I also, I also would like their input on it as well. You know, because we didn't attend the meeting, I'd like to know what some of their concerns were and why they decided to oppose it.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out the right process.
Yeah, and I guess I, for your consideration, and the council, they choose to do what they like. They've looked at it twice, and the reasons that they were adamant about were the ones I listed. And again, that was unanimous, and they've done that twice. So, I, my recommendation, if you'd like to look at it, is to, you know, if you want to adopt the provision that staff developed and we took through the process, you can hold a workshop and choose to then hold a hearing on that without having to go and re-review that through a comment period.
Okay.
If you wanted to do something different, then I would recommend that we workshop that. You provide the guidance on what that looks like, and then we could take that to the Planning Commission, and then we'd have to do a new comment period, and then we could bring it back before council. But if you solely just want to relook at the provision and consider adopting it, it's already been through a comment period, and it could just simply be set up for a new public hearing.
Okay. You guys have a preference? Jim, Mark, Keith?
Just jump into it? Yeah. Again, let's have a work session on it, talk about what all the facts are on there, and then we can decide to go from there.
Okay. We'll try to maybe hit the, maybe the February work session. Sure.
That work?
Yep, yeah. All right, thanks, Glenn. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
All right. So, I think I'm going to not have a mayor's report. Councilmembers, anything you want to say on committees and stuff before we do a little ceremony, say goodbye to Jim and Ruth?
Hey, W C, I've been reappointed to the Education and Training Committee.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Okay.
And Masala may cancel the trip. We don't know yet because the borders in Japan are closed at this point. But we've got a few months yet.
Yeah, and that's too bad. We'll just have to see how it goes. All right, well, let's, we've got some stuff over here. You guys just want to sit down? Move us a little bit of our work here. I got a walk.
You want to adjourn real quick?
What's that?
You want to adjourn real quick?
As part of the public meeting or not?
Listen, go ahead and adjourn.
All right. Who knows what we're going to say about Jim and Ruth? We don't want this to be on the record, do we? All right, we're adjourned.